Item 6.3, our 9:30 a.m. item. And that is to consider and approve the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project, AM 18-04DA, 18-01, GPAP 18-01, rezone 18-01, and RZ 20-01, GPD 18-01, SD 18-01, SD 201, use permit 1849, and use permit 2002. All right? And on the phone here, I see Director Scott DeLeon. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Scott.
Good morning, Board. Scott DeLeon, interim Director for Community Development Department. And it's my sincere pleasure to introduce this item this morning. What I'm going to do is a short PowerPoint presentation, and then we're going to turn the presentation over to the consultant that prepared the EIR. And then finally, the applicant will be making a presentation. And so I'm going to attempt to share my screen. So once again, good morning, Board, and interested members of the public. Again, my name is Scott DeLeon, interim director. We are spread all over the place. As you can tell, I'm in my office. I have some staff and a representative of the consultant that prepared the EIR downstairs in Conference Room B. And we have the applicant representatives and others also on this call or on this meeting. This morning, I'm going to be making a presentation about the work that we've done so far with respect to taking it to the Planning Commission and go over a couple of details and a couple of things that occurred at the Planning Commission. And then I'll be turning it over to the consultant who did the EIR. This morning, our agenda, again, is a little presentation about the Planning Commission discussion. Then you'll receive your report from Analytical Environmental Services. And then applicant will be making a presentation. And then we're going to suggest you entertain a public input. We have a little change in today's agenda. As you were probably aware, we received two significantly lengthy letters yesterday. And the consultant has asked for some additional time or will be requesting for some additional time to prepare a response to both of those letters. And I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation. But just so your Board is aware, we will be asking for this hearing to be continued to date later in the month. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. Again, a quick review of what the project is and what we did at the Planning Commission. You will see this slide again in future presentations. And I just included it just to kind of set the stage. The red outline is the area for the Guanac Valley project. The Middletown Housing Site is shown over here in town. And then there will be some discussion about the optional offsite water well site, which is located at the intersection of Highway 29 and Bus Canyon Road. And again, you'll see this slide later in other presentations. Some things that were brought up during the Planning Commission meeting. You'll note that we had two Planning Commission meetings, one on June 18th and another one on June 25th. Some of the issues that were raised were the timeframe for the final EIR public comment, consistency of the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Project with the Lake County General Plan, responses and issues raised by Caltrans. And there was a request for a summary of the changes that were made to the draft EIR. And I'm sure Ryan with AES will be including or prepared to talk to you about any issues with Caltrans or the summary of the changes between the draft EIR and the final. For the final impact report, public comments, there was some concern about the timeframe. The official public comment period for the draft EIR started in February. It was extended two weeks due to the COVID-19 and issues with making sure that the public had an opportunity to review it. So the total draft EIR comment period was 60 days. The final EIR was published on June 12th, and there were minimal changes made between the draft and the final. There were also additional opportunities to comment on the final EIR at the June 18th Planning Commission meeting. And though it wasn't required, the Planning Commission reopened the public input period on the June 25th meeting. So there was ample opportunity to provide comment. One of the issues raised at the 11th hour for the Planning Commission was the consistency with Lake County General Plan and a land use goal, Policy 6.12. And I'm going to go over that just briefly. You may hear additional commentary about that. There were some concerns raised that this project was not consistent with the Lake County General Plan, and specifically LU 6.12, which was a modification made in 2011 by our board in response to some litigation that the Sierra Club brought against the Crystal Lago project. This revision limited the number of residential units in a mixed-use resort residential project to equal but not exceeding the number of resort units. What I wanted to point out to you is the Middletown Area Plan, which included a special study of the Guanac Valley, was adopted in 2010 and prior to this modification that was done in 2011 as a result of the Sierra Club's legal challenge to the Crystal Lago project. Currently, the Middletown Area Plan and specifically the special study for Guanac Valley doesn't specify a ratio of residential to resort units, but it does conclude the property could support up to 800 residential dwelling units. The project was evaluating using the goals and objectives of the Middletown Area Plan and its special study of the Guanac Valley, which concluded that this valley was perfect for a mixed-use residential resort development. And of note, this particular phase of this project includes 436 residential dwelling units and 338 resort units. What we proposed, because of the conflict that was raised by the Sierra Club, what we proposed was a modification to the general plan so that the condition that was added, LU 6.12, would not apply to the special study zone of the Middletown Area Plan for the Guanac Valley. It's our opinion that the Middletown Area Plan should be the controlling document. It preceded the modification to the general plan. And so the language that was added at the Planning Commission brings the Middletown Area Plan and the general plan into consistency, and this project is now consistent with both. When the time comes, there are a number of county approvals, as indicated by the number of general plan amendments and different initials and things that were read at the intro to this. The first thing that you're going to be doing is the approval of the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Commercial Development. There are a number of different approvals that you're going to be doing, zoning ordinance, certifying the final EIR general plan amendment, and then, of course, use permits and specific plans of developments, subdivision maps, and a development agreement. For the Middletown Housing Site, you'll be doing a rezone, a tentative subdivision map, excuse me, and a major use permit. And then finally, that general plan amendment for the Guanac area. With that, I'll be turning this presentation over to Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services. And I and my staff will be available to answer any questions that you might have. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and I'll turn it over to Ryan. So thank you very much, Board.
Thank you, Director DeLeon. Thank you. There you go, Ryan. I think, go ahead.
Okay, great. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good morning, care, members of the Board and the public. I'm Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services. We are the environmental consultant that was hired to prepare the environmental impact report for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. My presentation should be up and running now.
Yes, we can see it.
Wonderful. And now, I'm going to attempt to move forward. There we go. All right. So the following presentation will detail the purpose of an environmental impact report, provide an overview of the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project, provide a summary of the analysis and the key findings from the EIR, and summarize our conclusions. To start off with a bit of background, the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, requires public agencies to consider the environmental effects of discretionary actions prior to making a decision. The environmental impact report prepared for the proposed project is an informational document intended to inform decision-makers of environmental issues before making a project decision. It also identifies potentially significant direct, indirect, and cumulative project-related impacts, and describes mitigation measures that will lessen those impacts. The CEQA environmental review process for the proposed project was initiated with release of the notice of preparation on April 23rd of 2019. The NOP described the project and identified the anticipated scope of analysis for the EIR. Comments responding to the NOP were considered during the preparation of the EIR. The draft EIR was then released for public and agency review and comment with issuance of a notice of availability on February 21st, announcing a 45-day comment period that was subsequently extended for an additional two weeks in response to the COVID outbreak. The total comment period for the draft EIR was subsequently 60 days, and it ended on April 21st. We received 29 written comment letters plus six verbal comments that were provided at the draft EIR Planning Commission meeting. Comments in the draft EIR were addressed in the final EIR, which was published on the county's website on June 12th, as Scott indicated. And the final EIR consists of responses to each of the comments received during the review period, a revised version of the draft EIR, and technical appendices. So it's divided between those three volumes shown here on this slide. In brief, the project will require approvals from Lake County and other responsible agencies that will allow the development of a mixed-use resort and residential community on the Guanac Valley site, offsite workforce housing in Middletown, and an optional offsite water supply well and pipeline extending from State Route 29 to the Guanac Valley site. These three project locations studied in the EIR are shown on this slide. The Guanac Valley site consists of approximately 16,000 acres, or 25 square miles, in southeast Lake County. It's located along Bus Canyon Road directly west of the Napa County line. The Middletown Housing Site, which is the location of the proposed offsite workforce housing, consists of approximately 12.75 acres in central Middletown. And the offsite well site consists of approximately 37 acres just east of Middletown and a pipeline alignment that would extend for approximately six miles along Bus Canyon to the project site. I do want to point out, I believe the county received some questions recently as to what were the proposed uses for the offsite well site. And they had a question as to whether or not housing was proposed there. And I just do want to start by, there's no housing proposed at the offsite well site, only that potential infrastructure being the well and pipeline. This slide illustrates the location of the Guanac Valley site, the Middletown Housing Site, and the well site. The crosshatch area shown here within the central portion of the Guanac Valley site is under separate ownership and not a part of the project. Let's see if I can find... The key requested county approvals are listed here and include an amendment to the general plan land use designation from agriculture, resource conservation, rural lands, and rural residential to resort commercial. So the entire Guanac Valley site is proposed to be designated as resort commercial. A zoning ordinance amendment to introduce a new zoning district referred to as the Guanac Valley District that would allow for future uses of the site generally consistent with the goals of the Middletown Area Plan. Approvals also include entitlements for Phase 1 of the Guanac Valley District, including phased tentative subdivision maps, as well as approval of entitlements for workforce housing in Middletown, including a rezoning of a portion of the site from single-family residential to two-family residential, and approval of a tentative subdivision map. This slide illustrates the proposed zoning for the Guanac Valley site. As you can see, the entire site would be designated Guanac Valley District. The project also proposes approximately 1,700 acres of agricultural combining district areas, which are shown in the black crosshatch here, and approximately 2,765 acres of open space combining districts, which is shown in the green crosshatch. The project would permit development of up to 850 hotel and resort residential units, 1,400 residential estate, 500 workforce cohousing bedrooms, resort amenities, and accessory uses. So those are the uses that will be allowed under the proposed Guanac Valley District. The Guanac Valley District will be developed over multiple phases, and at this time, detailed plans have only been developed for the first phase, which will be constructed over the next 10 years, and future phases will be built out based on market demand. Therefore, as a result of this extended timeline, the EIR provides a programmatic analysis of the impact of full buildout of the Guanac Valley District and a project-level analysis for impact of the Phase 1 development. Development of future phases would then be subject to additional CEQA analysis that would tier off the programmatic analysis in the EIR. Phase 1 of the Guanac Valley District would have a combined footprint of 1,415 acres. So this is the physical footprint of grading and ground disturbance. That would consist of five hotels with a total of 127 hotel units and 141 resort residential units, 401 residential estate villas, and 100 workforce cohousing bedroom units. Additionally, Phase 1 includes resort amenities, including an amphitheater, spa, equestrian areas, a new golf course, a camping area, and commercial and retail facilities. Phase 1 also includes agricultural production and support facilities, including up to two wineries, essential accessory facilities, including backup house, 50 temporary workforce hotel units referred to as the Entourage Hotel, an emergency response and fire center, a float plane dock on Beedert Reservoir, which is south of Bus Canyon Road, two helipads, including one south of Bus Canyon Road and one adjacent to the emergency response and fire center, and supporting infrastructure, including solar energy production areas. This slide illustrates the site plan for Phase 1. So the maroon areas here represent the resort parcels, with the residential parcels shown in blue, the golf course in dark green, and the open space combining district in the green hash. Additionally, the areas shown in the orange crosshatch here, which are sort of these linear that look like trails extending through the site, are proposed habitat connectivity easements that were added to the project to address comments received during the draft EIR review Undeveloped areas within the site will include approximately 2,765 acres of open space combining district, consistent with the requirements of the previous water rights EIR that expanded the place of use of water within the Guanac Valley site. The addition of 400 acres of habitat connectivity easements identified to generally align with wildlife movement corridors that were identified in the Maya Comas Taborietha Network, prepared by the Pepperwood Preserve. So those are the orange areas that I showed in the previous slide here. Approximately 1,700 acres of add combining district areas. Undeveloped areas within the residential lots is a result of a 1.5 acre development restriction within the Guanac Valley District zoning ordinance for residential lots. And approximately 7,600 acres of general open space that would be provided between the resort clusters that's not proposed for development under Phase 1. However, it should be noted that some of this, you know, general open space could be subject to development under future phases. As required by the proposed Guanac Valley District Design Guidelines, which are included as Appendix DG to the EIR, site-wide lighting design will preserve nighttime dark skies in accordance with the Dark Sky Initiative adopted by the county in the California Building Code. And this will be accomplished by minimizing the use of lighting fixtures and where used, ensuring that all exterior lights are shielded and downcast. Four options for electric power distribution are evaluated in the EIR, and they range from the provision of power by PG&E to the creation of a public utility district with electrical power distribution independent from PG&E, including generation plus storage of power for the project's entire energy needs. The proposed project will include the installation of solar panels to, at a minimum, meet the demands of the proposed residential units in accordance with California law, and would utilize renewable energy sources either through purchase or onsite generation to meet the demands of commercial and other uses within the site. Site access will be provided through two entrances on Bus Canyon Road. The primary access would occur via a new roadway and intersection, and we evaluated two options for this primary access road within the EIR. What we refer to as Option 1 within the EIR would be located approximately just two miles south of the existing Langtree Winery entrance. And the second option would be located at McCain Canyon closer to the Napa Valley's boundary, approximately 2.6 miles from the Langtree Winery entrance. Secondary access will be provided through improvement to an existing roadway that's located between the Langtree Winery entrance and the proposed primary entrance option. Both access intersections would include turning lanes, deacceleration acceleration lanes if needed, and would include stop and yield signs. Additionally, warning signs will be installed on both sides of the intersections so that travelers are aware of the approaching intersection. Given the remote location of the site, the applicant proposes to develop an independent water and wastewater system to serve the proposed development. Sufficient onsite water and wastewater capacity for Phase 1 and future phases has been demonstrated in the water supply assessment and the wastewater feasibility report that were both included as appendices to the EIR. The new water wastewater system would either be owned and operated by a newly established private utility, or would be sold to and operated by an existing utility company or district. Potable water for the project would be provided via deep water supply wells within the site. And non-potable water for irrigation and fire supply would be provided through recycled water, surface water where allowable, and optionally through the offsite water supply well. Although it should be noted that the water supply assessment did find that there were sufficient supplies within the site itself to meet the needs of the project without the use of the offsite well. Wastewater treatments for resort clusters and nearby residential development would be provided through centralized wastewater treatment plants that would produce high-quality recycled water, and independent septic systems would be used for the more remote residential Offsite improvements associated with a project may include electrical transmission line upgrades. However, these would primarily be limited to just rewiring existing poles, and therefore physical environmental effects would be minimal. The water supply well that I illustrated in the previous slide, access intersection improvements, and the offsite workforce housing in Middletown. And the environmental effects of all these offsite improvements are evaluated in the The offsite workforce housing will consist of 50 housing units, including 21 single-family and 29 duplex units, each with four bedrooms. And the offsite workforce housing will also include a community center and open space along the creek that runs to the site. This slide illustrates the site plan for the offsite workforce housing. As you can see here, the duplexes are located in the central portion of the site with the single-family units surrounding the perimeter. Rain gardens and stormwater detention and treatment areas will be constructed to ensure no significant increase in stormwater. And I do want to point out that all excavation within the site will be balanced, cut, and filled. So although there will be some areas of the site that are built up to be above the flood plain, that will be counteracted by developing a stormwater detention basin in the central portion of the site. So there'll be no change to the flood elevations within the surrounding areas. So Volume 2 of the final EIR, which is the revised version of the draft EIR and really the heart of the environmental analysis, the outline of Volume 2 is shown here on this slide. So Section 1 includes an introduction that provides an overview and an explanation of the EIR process and the issues that were raised during scoping. Section 2, the very detailed description of the proposed project. Section 3 is the environmental analysis, so that describes the environmental baseline on the proposed project and the offsite improvement areas, the regulatory setting, and then a detailed description of potential impacts and recommended mitigation measures to avoid impacts. Section 4 addresses other CEQA considerations, including discussions of cumulative impacts, the potential for indirect and growth-inducing effects, and also summarizes the significant unavoidable effects of the project. Section 5 includes an analysis of various alternatives to the project. And then we have the bibliographic section. So the resource areas addressed within Section 3, environmental consequences, are organized into the following subsections that are listed here. And the topical areas within the EIR were determined based on the results of the scoping comments that were received after release of the notice of preparation, as well as an initial study that was prepared. Extensive studies were conducted in support of the environmental impact analysis and were included as appendices to the draft EIR and the final EIR. These include multiple biological assessments and cultural resource surveys, traffic impact analyses, and water resource studies.
Excuse me, Ryan. I don't mean to interrupt, but I need to ask a technical question.
Sure.
I just received a text. Are we getting, are we having any video problems with Granicus or anything else? Does anyone know? I got a text saying that it was frozen.
Let me double-check.
And I don't know if that's on Granicus or anything else, so I'm just checking.
I checked on...
I'm checking right here, too.
No, looks like we're still moving along right now on Granicus. And they're sounding.
Maybe it was something with MediaCom. It says, "Was frozen on TV since Guanac item began." So, you know, I don't know if it's MediaCom. Sorry about that, Ryan. I just wanted to make sure we were getting all the information out there.
Absolutely.
Being that I've checked on it, go ahead and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, let's see. So on this slide here, I just want to summarize briefly the key additions to the technical analysis, the appendices that were made following release of the draft EIR. So these are the changes that were made within the final. So the oak plan that was previously included within the draft EIR was revised to increase the oak woodland preservation ratios, to require three acres of preservation for every acre of impacted valley oak woodland, and two acres of preservation for every acre of impact to all other oak woodlands, versus the 1.5 to 1 preservation ratio that was required in the draft EIR. Additional revisions to that plan included clarification that Oak Savannah is a subset of oak woodland, and the monitoring requirements for mitigation plantings were increased. So the requirement to monitor for a certain number of years was increased. The wildfire response plan, which is included as Appendix Fire to the draft EIR, was revised to require the establishment of roadway fire breaks upon occupancy of the structures versus leaving the timing of the fire breaks, the discretion of the homeowners association, and also to require that primary structures are equipped with an exterior fire suppression system. An air transportation technical memo was added, so we do not have one in the draft, to clarify information related to the operations of the float plane dock and helipads within the site in response to comments that were received from Caltrans Aviation. And Appendix Wildlife, this is also a new appendix, was added to evaluate further wildlife movement corridors in the Guanac Valley site that were identified in the Maya Comas Taborietha Connectivity Network Report. And as a result of this study, the 400 acres of habitat easements were added to the site plan that I showed previously. And finally, a transportation demand management plan was provided in accordance with the mitigation measures in the draft EIR to reduce vehicle mile traveled impact. So this plan essentially implements the mitigation or the mitigation requirements that were in the draft EIR initially. Okay, so on the following slides here, I'm just going to summarize the key issues and mitigation measures that were recommended in the EIR that we've heard from various folks that they have concerns related to. So I just wanted, full disclosure here, this is not a complete summary of all the impacts and mitigation measures in the draft EIR, but just some of the key findings. So with respect to aesthetics, the EIR found that the majority of the proposed Phase 1 development would not be visible from public vantage points. However, the site access Option 2 at McCain Canyon Road, so the access option that's closer to Napa, would result in significant alteration of the topography in that area that would be considered significant and unavoidable under that would be considered significant and unavoidable under sequoia. Additionally, because the location of future development has not been identified, the future phases of the project, we don't know exactly where those are going to occur, the EIR identified that development of those future phases would have a potentially significant unavoidable effect to viewers along Bus Canyon Road, which is the county designated scenic corridor. With the incorporation of dark sky lighting strategies in the Guanac Valley District Design Guidelines at the Guanac Valley site, the project would have a less than significant impact associated with lighting and similar mitigation measures were recommended to be implemented at the Middletown housing site. Regarding agriculture, currently there are 1,100 acres of agricultural zoning within the Guanac Valley site, and after the proposed zoning amendment, the project would preserve approximately 1,700 acres and add preserve combining districts, which is an overall increase in agricultural zoning. The majority of the important farmland within the overall boundaries of the site is located within the Guanac Valley, which is under separate ownership and therefore not a part of the project. And within the project site itself, there are approximately 200 acres of important farmland and only 50 acres of this will be converted as a result of Phase One, with the potential for conversion of important farmland in future phases. Mitigation requires that conservation easements are established on agricultural land of equivalent quality. However, because there will be a net loss of important farmland, this was considered a significant unavoidable impact. The project will result in emissions of criteria pollutants and greenhouse gases from construction and operation. Mitigation measures include construction best management practices, including dust control and the use of low emission Tier Four equipment, and operational measures including energy efficiency and transportation demand management strategies such as carpooling and shuttles. Because the Lake County air basin is an attainment for all criteria air pollutants, these measures would reduce impacts associated with air quality to less than significant. However, the generation of greenhouse gas emissions would exceed the threshold associated with statewide greenhouse gas reduction targets and therefore will be considered significant and unavoidable. The Guanac Valley site supports habitat for numerous special status wildlife and plant species. The EIR requires extensive mitigation measures to protect these species from harm during construction and operational activities. The measures include, but are not limited to, construction or worker awareness training, pre-construction surveys, lighting measures, restricted construction times, fencing near sensitive habitats, habitat preservation, restrictions on perimeter fencing to allow wildlife movement, and a detailed oak mitigation plan that I described previously. There are approximately 4,500 acres of oak woodlands within the Guanac Valley site, with 477 acres being impacted by the Phase One development. The oak mitigation plan requires that residential lot development is restricted to a maximum of one acre of impact to oaks. So each individual residential lot, when it's developed, can only impact up to one acre of oaks. Valley oak woodland must be preserved at a ratio of three to one, and other oak woodlands must be preserved at a ratio of two to one. In other words, for every one acre of impact occurring, two acres must be preserved. And individual oaks that are impacted have to be replanted at either a two to one or a five to one ratio, depending upon the size of the tree. Cultural resources surveys of the site have identified over 60 known historic and archaeological resources, some of which are also tribal cultural resources. Mitigation includes avoidance of the known resources within the site and requires that the applicant retain a tribal cultural advisor, conduct construction worker awareness training, and prepare an unanticipated discovery plan. Additionally, professional archaeologists and tribal monitors must conduct construction monitoring of initial ground disturbing activities. And since the publication of the draft EIR and as a result of ongoing consultation with Middletown Rancheria regarding tribal cultural resources, the mitigation measures in the final EIR have been further refined to emphasize avoidance and minimization of the known resources and newly discovered resources and the clarified procedures in the event of discovery of resources during construction. Groundwater pump tests and the water supply assessment technical appendix found that there are sufficient water supplies within the project site to support the proposed development without adversely impacting surface and groundwater resources. Mitigation does require that a face field pump test of the offsite well be conducted that demonstrates no drawdown of groundwater beyond 300 feet of that well and requires quarterly groundwater monitoring for the first five years of use to demonstrate no impact to groundwater levels. Additional mitigation measures were recommended associated with stormwater pollution and flood plain mapping. Due to the distance of the site from the nearest receptors, most noise impacts were determined to be less than significant. However, the EIR did identify potentially significant impacts associated with the use of the float plane dock and the helipads, as well as the increase in traffic-related noise along Bus Canyon Road. Mitigation measures include reduction of construction noise from equipment and trucks using techniques such as snucklers, and non-emergency aircraft and helicopter flight times must be limited to daytime hours between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, depending upon the time of the year, so as not to cause sleep disturbance at the nearby residential receptors. After mitigation, the increase in traffic-related noise along Bus Canyon would be considered significant and unavoidable, though. And, you know, this is a, is a result of the increase in the noise levels. So the existing traffic levels out there are fairly low. With the project, those would substantially increase, and so the overall noise levels will be, it'll be an audible change for the residences located along that roadway. The EIR traffic study identified potentially significant impacts associated with level of service impact at several intersections, including near-term impacts to locations on State Route 29, and cumulative impacts to intersections outside of Lake County jurisdiction. The traffic study also found that the generation of vehicle miles traveled per capita would be above the regional average and therefore it recommended mitigation measures to reduce vehicle mile traveled impact. So the various mitigation measures required by the EIR include entering into agreement with Caltrans for improvements to State Route 29 intersections, including conducting some intersection improvements to SR 29 and Bus Canyon Road prior to the project moving forward, conducting a traffic study and implementing mitigation measures for future phases of the project before they move forward, and also implementing the transportation demand management program. With respect to wildfire effects, the proposed project itself incorporates a number of design features that are outlined in the wildfire prevention plan, including strategic fire breaks along roadways and drainages, fuel management and livestock grazing practices, and exterior sprinkler systems on the building structures. With the measures outlined in the wildfire prevention plan, the EIR found that the project would have less than significant impacts related to the observation of wildfire hazards. However, mitigation was recommended to address post-wildfire measures that should be implemented in the event of a fire to prevent land fires and flooding. And as Scott alluded to earlier, we did just recently receive some detailed comments related to wildfire issues that we are going to be looking into and addressing between now and the next hearing related to the project. And finally, the final EIR can be viewed on the county's website at this address. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ryan. Greatly appreciated for your presentation. I know when we talked about the timing, let me get back to, do we have one more presentation to go on this? Scott, or is this, we're going to go ahead and go right into questions?
Well, I think Kirsty from, from Maha is probably on the, on the phone or on the, on the meeting. I believe they plan to make a presentation.
Excellent. That's what I thought. So we'll go ahead and do the final presentation, and then we'll, and then we'll bring back the board and then open it up for comments. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Kirsty.
Actually, I'm going to step up first, Chair Simon. Good morning.
Okay.
Chair and honorable members of the board, my name is Catherine Philippakis, and I'm an attorney with Raella Braun and Martel in St. Helena. I'm very pleased to be here this morning to represent this project. I have been involved with the Guanac property for about 18 years now, going back to the days of Orville McGoon, whom some of you may remember. And I'm so glad that we're able to present to you what we consider to be a truly world-class proposal. Before we get started, I would like to very sincerely express our thanks to your staff and county council's office for all their hard work and assistance during the past couple of years while we worked on this application. We always appreciate their professionalism and their collegiality in particular, which is not always the case when dealing with local agencies. We have a number of speakers who will describe different aspects of the project for you today. The first of these is Jonathan Breen. Jonathan, or JB, as we all know him as, is one of the development partners and one of the project visionaries. He has decades of experience developing luxury hotels, and he's known in the hotel industry as an innovator of very high-end resort communities. He has been business partners with Adrian Zeca for over 20 years, and together they developed a brand of luxury resorts known as Setai. Jonathan is going to speak to you about the overall concept of the project, and I'm going to turn things over to him. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Also, just, can I get, I'd like, I'm going to show a video after I finish, so if it's possible, just to have Rachel be able to share her screen as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. So, good morning, Chairman Simon and members of the board. My name is Jonathan Breen, and I'm one of the development partners for this project. On behalf of my other development partners, being Adrian Zeca, Chris Meredith, Kevin Case, and Nick Fung, we want to thank the Lake County staff and the community for the support and your time today. Adrian Zeca and I first looked at this project way back in 2012. So as you can imagine, we are very grateful to be here today with the purpose to develop a luxury international resort that provides the long-term sustainable goals of new economic, employment, and housing opportunities. In 2016, after years of searching, we were very fortunate to find a responsible owner with a commitment to long-term preservation and low-density development. Our vision has always been about preserving this beautiful land and undertaking a very low-density development that is in tune with the nature. When complete, the development square footage will use less than 10% of the total property. Once we acquired the property in 2016, we immediately began commissioning the best international architects and designers to work with us on the overall master plan and then the vision for each of the components of the project. The planning process started with our master planner, John Michel Gathie from Denniston, and our team extensively hiking every part of the 16,000-acre property. After over a year, we had agreed on an overall master plan. The next step was bringing each of the various architects to the property and working with them on a location that appealed to them as a designer. These eventually became their respective community cluster areas. From the beginning, we utilized the Middletown area plan as our guide, and we hope you are pleased with what we came up with when we established our project objectives. I thought it might be helpful today to also mention the designers and team members who are behind this project. The designs that you will see here today are the result of a team of over 35 talented professionals, including Denniston International, who completed the master plan but is also designing the golf section with three clubhouses and various golf fillers, and is also working with Tom Doak, who is designing the actual golf course. Backham Gillam Architects, led by Howard Backham, has designed the Farm Village, which includes a hotel, a farm-to-table restaurant, a grocery store, artisanal retail barns, a farmer's market, winery, and associated villas. FDG Architects, who consists of the Argentinian professional polo player, Nacho Figueres, and a father-and-son team of Ignacio Ramos, have designed the Polo and Equestrian Center along with some polo villagers. Ed Tato and Kerry Hill Architects, who have both worked with Adrian Zeca for over 40 years and have designed for Adrian some of the best resorts around the world. Both are designing intimate boutique resorts with their own villas. Tato Wando from Japan has designed a wonderful museum and art complex. Versus design are handling the architecture coordination with many of these overseas architects. We have a very talented landscape team that includes Island Planning Corporation, SWA Group, and PCI Landscape Architects. And our civil engineers at Sherwood Design, who have greatly assisted the team in helping all of them with a civil design for such a large-scale project. Since all the team members could not be here today, I would like to present to you this short video. Thank you very much for your time. Rachel, are you able to bring up the video?
I am very, very concerned about intruding into nature. I don't want to disturb it. I love nature. It's the biggest piece of land that I've ever had a chance to work with, and to find one that is so beautiful, because it is in wine country, with the lakes, with the topography that it has, that this land that is so fantastic, put into a responsible owner, that we were able to find to buy it. That is very rare and unusual.
I don't think I've ever seen anything so beautiful. The goal of the project is to create something that we don't affect the land. And at the end of the day, the beauty of the land is still the essence of the project. That has always been the mantra from, from the beginning.
And let me tell you, and I've been around the world many times, I know when I, when I see a site, it hits you, it doesn't. This is not something intellectual. You can't.
I started getting calls from people with environmental interests because my work seemed different than everybody else. The less it looks like a golf course, the better. This project, so much bigger and such a longer-term vision than most of the things that I've worked on, they just keep coming up with more interesting pieces like this equestrian facility.
I really believe that there's going to be a before and after in, in my life of this project, because this is a project where someone gives you a white canvas and allows you to dream, and that doesn't happen too often. And here, the idea was, okay, let's bring this equestrian lifestyle to life and just dream, you know? There's no limitations to it, except taking care of the environment and not interfering with that, right? It is an honor, right, to be able to work with someone like Adrian, someone that has given people beautiful experiences, and being able to work with someone like him is, it's a dream come true, it's an honor. I just can't wait for this whole thing to, to happen.
We'll never again get to do a project like that. Buildings are buildings, but nature is fantastic.
I just can't wait for this whole thing to happen.
We'll never again get to do a project like that. Buildings are buildings, but nature is fantastic. Okay.
Great, thank you. Good morning Chair Simon, members of the board, and members from the community who have joined online. My name is Christie Shelton. For those of whom I haven't met, I'm the Planning and Entitlement Manager for the Mahawhat Valley. As you can imagine, I've been working with a design team, the county and the community, for over three years, as is shown by the almost 250 public support letters that were submitted to the record. And it is with excitement and my absolute pleasure to present this innovative and independently-designed project. We're just going to catch up on the slides for a minute, hold on one second. For those of you guys who have been on the ranch or within the vicinity or called Middletown your home, you're very well that this is a very beautiful property with a diverse landscape, with existing hills ranging from 800 to 2,000 feet above sea level, and of course, the renowned Guanac Valley. The ranch has a rich history, home to many indigenous cultures over the past thousands of years, then homesteaders, and some of you may even know the property from the Lily Landtree Estate Winery. Over the past 200 years, the ranch has been continuously grazed, as you can see by the map of historic pastures. Please note, there's almost about 500 acres of land that was not purchased by the current owner and therefore is not part of his request, nor part of any of the land use requests current. William Dieter engineered the water system that exists today. Most of you know the Dieter Reservoir, which you drive by on Butts Canyon Road next to the White Picket Fence. But that is just one of the many water reservoirs which store most of the watershed within the ranch, seven, which are jurisdictional. About 10 years ago, the ranch changed the water rights from irrigated pasture to allow for irrigation of the vineyards or agriculture. This means 10,000 acre feet of current irrigation for the vineyards, and some of our projects will not be relying on groundwater. For those of you who may not be familiar with acre-feet conversion, you literally put one foot of water over one acre. So in this case, the property is 16,000 acres with one foot over more than half of what would be the existing approval of irrigation with no change of the project. About 3.3 billion gallons of existing water, surface water, not groundwater. The approval 20 years ago allowed for an irrigation footprint of 2,800 acres. You will see there are large areas of surface water that do not have existing or proposed vineyards on it. This slide represents the current development on the ranch. As you will see, as part of the project, the majority of the vineyards will be placed in agricultural preserve. And more exciting, the project proposes a diversity of agriculture, which we'll go into in the forthcoming slides. Now, we'll start to begin diving into the project description. I want to pause here because for the most part, the following slides will focus on what we call Phase One. The specific plan of development, which is discussed earlier, includes the project-level DIR analysis. Our Phase One includes our forecast of development for about the next 10 years, which will be referred to as our project unless otherwise identified. It should be noted that the general plan of development, the rezoned future phases, or the 50-year plan, will require additional environmental review on the near future. Key project components within the 16,000-acre boundary, our project footprint, as less than 10% of the ranch, or 1,450 acres. As just described, the ranch has previous entitlements that allows for extensive vineyard development on-site. Our project will displace approximately 400 acres of planted or previously approved vineyards. In addition, there is 2,765 acres of designated open space. This was required as part of the 2009 waterright DIR modification and includes the mitigation for the 400 acres spread above that our project displaces. In the forthcoming slides, you'll be introduced to the 425-acre Habitat Connectivity Easement, which is something that we have recently added in response to some of the public comments of cases in the draft DIR. Please note, these easements are in addition to the designated open space, providing a total of almost 3,200 acres in long-term preservation. In the next slide, you'll be introduced to the Oak Woodland Preservation. This has been enlarged from 1,650 to 1,965 acres since our last presentation, again, in response to some of the public comments we received. As you saw in the previous presentations and again in the forthcoming slides, we are offering two combining districts within the new Guanac Valley District. The Agricultural Preserve combining district totaling 1,700 acres, which was described by Ryan, and in addition, the open space combining district, as I just described. Finally, the majority of the site is rural landscape. We call this the area in between, and will be left as functionally-preserved open space for the majority of the site. As discussed, this area has already been pre-selected for agricultural, resort, and commercial development through the special study previously approved in the Middletown Area Plan adopted 10 years ago. As you can see on this map, the majority of the ranch is within the Middletown Area Plan Special Study Number Three. The Middletown Area Plan was a public process that formalized the goals and visions of the future growth of Southern Lake County. The property owner purchased this property to invest in this visionary plan and would score it to be part of the realization. The primary goals of the area plan was to focus on revitalizing the historic resort development with commercial uses as the primary use, and to grow the high-quality agritourism concept as identified in the Middletown Area Plan. These renderings are what the Mahawhat Farm Community Village would look like. As you can see, the vision is grounded in the agritourism concepts as identified by the area plan, and most specifically focusing on the agricultural bounty that Lake County has to offer, while introducing an experience of the art of harvesting from the land. The area plan informed our proposed zoning ordinance for the Guanac Valley District. To ensure the continued importance and reliance on the historic agricultural uses on the property and within Lake County, the emphasis on agriculture was preserved with the proposed zoning district. As discussed, to protect the agriculture, we created the Agricultural Preserve combining district to ensure the long-term preservation of on-site agricultural development. Most importantly, the resort concept is rooted in the local cultural heritage in combination with the farm-to-table concept. The concepts identified in the Middletown Area Plan informed our proposed zoning ordinance. This slide shows the existing zone. Please note, the combining district remained unchanged. And in addition, please note, there are 69 legal existing parcels. As discussed, this is a slide of the proposed Guanac Valley District. One of the goals of the area plan was for it to be rezoned to a planned development district combining agriculture, commercial, and residential uses. Currently, the Lake County zoning ordinance does not have a mixed resort and residential zoning. Therefore, we are requesting to be rezoned to the Guanac Valley District, or GBD, as this provides for the unique blend of commercial, hotel, and residential uses balanced with the primary agriculture and open space. This is where our proposal diverts into two very important areas to distinguish. As already noted, any additional requests beyond our first phase will require another specific plan application and further environmental review. I'd like to point out on this slide that the two additional proposed combining districts, designated open space and agricultural overlay, as described, will include resort development. One of the primary goals of this project is to maintain the designation of a boutique hotel. This requires 50 hotel rooms or less. This is achieved by having a Keystone Boutique Hotel as the flagship of five separate primary resort communities. These resort communities, which we'll go into detail in the next slides, typically have a boutique hotel surrounded by resort residential, which are small cottages for families to rent for longer stays, resulting in a total of 288 hotel units within the project Phase One. Typically, the resort communities are surrounded by low-density residential wholesale parcels, which I'll explain on the next slide. Low-density residential is another very primary goal of this project. It's easy to misconceive the development of this project because of the scale. As you can see, the development impact ratio is minor. This graphic was produced by tracing the typical rooftops and roadways. The total number of residential estates is 401. Our footprint is 0.2 units per acre, or approximately 2 units per 10 acres. Here is an example of a typical lot. This is an example we call the pizza slice. It is 6.5 acres with a development footprint of 1.5 acres, which results in 5 acres of functionally-preserved open space. For reference, this 5 acres of potentially-preserved open space is not included in the designated open space or habitat calculation. This low-density concept within the preserved open space is a key element of the project's objective and sustainable and financial viability. Now, I'd like to introduce Courtney Bauer to discuss the architectural elements in various resort communities. Courtney is an architect and a principal of Versa Design, whose work is grounded in active social, environmental, and economic issues, while aesthetically exploring the ideas of beauty, sustainability, cultural convention, and place. Courtney Bauer?
Thank you for your speak, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello Courtney, we can hear you.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. Thanks again Christie. Before I begin, I'd like to mention that Versa Design has a longstanding relationship working with Lotus Land, and is very proud to represent the world-renowned designers shaping this unparalleled project. The first community that we'd like to describe today is the Equestrian and Polo Center. It is designed by Figueres Design Group, and they are based out of Argentina. This cluster is focused on the equestrian activities and is highlighted by two recreational polo fields. The main commercial area includes three buildings, a clubhouse, stables, and a pony camp. These three buildings are organized on-site by a water element and are integrated into the site with planted berms and green roofs, implying an extension of the landscape. The bermed areas at the clubhouse will act as a viewing platform for the polo field. Adjacent to the main commercial center is a small lodge surrounded by resort cottages and then peripheral villas. The Figueres Design Group's architecture draws inspiration from the site by incorporating site materials, adapting to and paying reverence to the existing site conditions to enhance the user's accessibility and appreciation of the site. You can see that by the stone walls, soft green roofs, and long horizontal lines. The top picture on the right of this slide shows a typical residential villa, which, at the end of the presentation, we will show you a short video of the villas and their integration into the landscape. The second community that we'll go to today, that I'd like to describe, is Bone Ridge, and it is designed by Ed Tuttle of Design Realization, who was a Northern Californian native. Ed Tuttle's architecture includes a unique circular hotel and restaurant that is punctuated by terraced green roofs. An exterior terrace and pathway along a prominent ridge line offers a breathtaking experience. The single-level resort residential cottages flank the circular hotel and then is surrounded by low-density residential villas. Honoring the vast beauty of Bone Ridge and its panoramic views, this architectural cluster adopts the simplicity of barn architecture in shapes and volumes and the intermingling juxtaposition between indoor and outdoor living spaces. Building footprints are scaled according to the existing geological footprint, minimizing the built form in respect to the site. Low-lined residential resort structures with pitched roofs, planted roofs, and stone paved terraces will complement the site. Next, we have Mahawhat Farms, which is designed by Howard Backham of Backham and Gillam Architects, a local architect based out of St. Helena. This is the largest community in the project and the village or the heart of the project. The cluster includes a winery, a sales center at the Hilltop Hotel, the village, and the surrounding resort cottages and residential villas. The winery is a small boutique winery offering wine tastings and production from the surrounding vineyards. Above the village is the Hilltop Hotel, which consists of eight individual bungalows and an open restaurant pavilion, as well as a location to entertain sales and marketing. The village includes a community clubhouse, 12 acres of market gardens to serve the true farm-to-table restaurant, an outdoor farmer's market-covered pavilion, a cafe, artisan barns to include animal husbandry and an apothecary, a post office, a location for wine tasting, and an area for families to play bocce ball. The Mahawhat Farm Village is centered around recreational activities with the Upper Bone Lake and Lagoon to be provided by paddle boarding and canoeing. This is the most dense part of the project and the closest to the main entry road for public and private guests to access. Moving to the next community. Located at the northern portion of the site, this area is designed by Denniston International and was previously referred to as Red Hill Estates. This community area is designed around the golf course and also offers a lodge and amenities. Guests arrive at the resort facility at a lower level and are introduced to the landscape, which they will traverse through in a curated path to the main lodge, extending their time and hopefully their appreciation of the surroundings. Amenities such as a lounge, bar, dining room, library, and boutique occur under one roof at the main lodge. Derived from the local Native American dwelling, the round form allows for maximum views of its circumference and takes advantage of the resulting interior courtyard, which offers a prime location for special dinners and events. Throughout the community, villas are placed in a variety of landscapes, including agricultural, wooded, and sloped. Denniston utilizes green roofs as well as simple pitched roofs, recalling agricultural vernacular on the site. Next, I'd like to describe to you the golf course. As you'll remember from the introductory video, the golf course has been designed by Tom Doak of Renaissance Golf. Historically, his course design has been consistently praised for its minimalist ethos and for respecting the natural contours and vegetation present on-site. That's what makes them different from each other and from what others are building. The sensitivity of the site at Guanac Valley and our client's goals for the project present a chance to take the design to another level and to present a golf course which barely looks like a course at all. To assist in the sustainable course design, Tom has walked the site repeatedly, and in the initial stages spent time with a biologist walking the course to determine where the most mindful locations were for its siting. The non-returning course is unique in its configuration and minimal in its site impact. By stretching the route over two miles, it becomes a thin ribbon through the landscape, only recognizable as a golf course and not a lawn, from the perspective of the golfer. The course is served by three clubhouses at the first halfway and 18th hold, and these are designed by Denniston, providing consistency in the architecture of the cluster. The golf course is one of the main examples of how the land dictated the design. Next up, we have the Resort at Trout Flack Community, and this one is designed by Carrie Hill Architects. It is, in its essence, a minimalist complex designed in harmony with the natural topography. The commercial components include an entry and service pavilion, a resort center with a pool and hotel unit. It is a modest architecture inspiring the user's understanding of the sense of place, achieved with low-thin roof lines and green roofs to obscure the view of the structures. A cluster of simple-story pavilions along the ridge line will overlook vineyards on the property. Inspired by the concept of low-impact echo lodge, the plan positions each building according to the existing contours to minimize disturbance to the terrain. Combining stone planks and ramp earth walls, high ceilings extend the feeling of openness and transparency from the exterior landscape to the interior. The site is detailed by outdoor spaces, a lounge veranda, and dining terraces overlooking the reflecting pool. This is the Spa Community, and it is unique as it is the smallest community cluster planned, and its programming is focused on the Spa and Wellness Facility and 11 surrounding villas. It does not include a hotel component. The facility is located on a plateau on the land and capitalizes- by a blended interior and exterior design. Located at the Tented Camp Area. Located along Poota Creek, the Tented Camp Area is designed by Jan Kortler. The property will feature an escape within the most remote area of the property surrounded by the beauty of Lake County rolling hills and streams. The project includes a request for a series of tented camp sites and limited accessory buildings. This area will offer seasonal opportunities for a very limited number of guests. In keeping with Jan's heritage on safari and Tanzania, the experience in the Tented Camp Area will be focused on viewing and respecting the natural surroundings. I will now hand the presentation back over to Kirsty to discuss accessory uses on the site.
Thanks, Courtney. Accessory uses. This exhibit shows all of the accessory to resort uses designed as part of the specific plan in Phase One project. On the left side of the sheet, you'll see the two renderings of the backup house operations and fire station. On-site workforce housing located on the pork chart looking personal on the west side of Bus Canyon Road includes a hundred units. A strategically-placed emergency response center, including a fire station, emergency medical staff, and a helipad dedicated for emergency purposes. For guests choosing to arrive via float plane or helicopter, there is a welcome kiosk and arrival center conveniently accessed directly from Bus Canyon Road. The various hotel clusters will be supported by multiple facilities shown within these red areas, such as water and wastewater treatment facilities, alternative energy production, and various housekeeping or support facilities. This slide shows our onsite accessory uses, including the fire station and the backup house. Both of these areas were designed by Courtney, whom you just heard from Verses Design, and includes a modern agricultural design aesthetic. An offsite workforce housing location is proposed as an option within the EIR. This site is located within the boundaries of Middletown and would allow employees and their families to reside within the community instead of being housed on-site. This site will include a small park, a small community center with a gym and pool, and the property will be served by the Caliomi Water District and Lake County Sanitary Sewer and request a higher density to allow for duplexes within the inner portion of the property and maintains a single-family residential zoning on the exterior of the property. This proposal uses a total of thirty-six lots with fifty housing units. In response to some of the public comments, we wanted to provide a comparison of, in 2008, the county of Lake approved a tentative subdivision called Stone Brook Meadows on this property. As you can see on the right side of the slide, this approval included forty-nine residential lots. There were thirty-one lots on the exterior of the property and eighteen on the interior. In comparison, our request includes a similar with unit count, fifty units on only thirty-six lots. Twenty-one single-family units on twenty-one lots on the exterior of the property resulted in a lower density, ten fewer lots on the exterior portion of the property to blend more within the surrounding land uses. On the left side of the screen, you'll see the site location in context to the surrounding area and on the bottom, the zoning categories with colors depicted. This slide shows aerial photography showing the surrounding lounge uses with the proposed subdivision overlaid into the existing site conditions. This helps to put into perspective the size of the site and the density required and how the increased density in the interior allows for a lower density on the exterior. As previously discussed, the EIR analyzed the potential of the well and pipeline. However, I'd like to note that it remains an option as there are no current applications or requests for any entitlements to install a well nor pipeline. The request is for a non-potable backup water source to secure financing. Now, I'd like to give the presentation and introduce Joe Runko. He's a principal and landscape architect with SWA Group based in Sausalito since 1991. His work has focused on large-scale projects that balance development with the unique ecological and cultural aspects of the land with an emphasis on sustainable and resilient landscape.
Thank you, Kirsty, and members of the board, Mr. Chair. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, and I would like to say that as a landscape architect, the entire landscape team takes the inspiration from Mr. Zeca and kind of the quality and character of this place and preservation of the natural landscape very, very seriously and inspirationally as behind all of our work. I'd like to say that the way we've approached the landscape at kind of a high level is to think of it in terms of what's really distinct about the site and its landscape character. And to that end, we've grouped the landscape generally into eight, I'll say, distinct zones, even though there's overlap, that really will guide the future landscaping and preservation and restoration as development occurs across the site. While, you know, there is some overlap, but it really gives us a framework to think about how to approach the landscape improvements in terms of new landscape, but also protection and preservation of what's there. This is a, we have sort of what we described as a light-touch approach to the site in terms of development overall, in terms of siting and grading and landscaping to integrate buildings, and then a heavy reliance on native and well-adapted plant materials over the long life of this project. One really unique and important aspect of the project is establishment of a long-term, very large-scale native plant nursery on-site to, that will propagate plants which are endemic to the site and to the region for use in the landscape development of the site. Next slide, please. Oak woodlands, and there's been much mention of this, are a very, very important part of not just the character, but I'd say more importantly, the ecology and health of the site. There are significant stands of oaks throughout the site, as most of you probably know, of five major species, and so the preservation and protection of the oaks throughout the site has been an important and serious kind of charge we've all taken. There's a specifically designated open space corridor that was originally established in order to, partially in order to protect some of the more significant stands of oak and also to ensure the connectivity of important habitats. Within, as I mentioned, this designated open space corridor, next slide, please. As you can see here, was originally identified in 2009 or as part of the 2009 Water Right CIR that was mentioned earlier, and it remains in the same general vocation to, for basically dedicated open space. This will ensure the long-term protection and preservation of over twenty-seven hundred acres of land, and this will be a, put into the combining district will be established as the project is developed. The open space corridor is preserved in conjunction with the additional habitat connectivity easements that Ryan mentioned earlier, as shown on the next slide. These easements were additionally, initially not proposed, but then were proposed in response to public comments and further review as the project proceeded. These things, these corridors were identified in the My Commiss Barryessa M2B Network Report published in 2018, and so the plan is now accommodated and incorporated. These additional corridors, as I said, was not originally envisioned to connect important the open space, from the open space through the site and avoiding development, and they're highlighted in yellow as you can see on the screen. I think Kirsty mentioned already, this added an additional four hundred and twenty-five acres of protected lands. The project also, I mean, there are lands that are sort of not, we call the rural landscapes. Non-dedicated areas are approximately six seventy-six hundred acres of land. This area is not forecast for development and will remain in its rural and agrarian character. I should mention that, you know, grazing management and continued grazing of these lands is, will be an important part of the use to improve the overall health and quality of the undeveloped land, but it's also a key part of our wildfire prevention efforts for the project. Wetlands and lakes and streams and all the riparian kind of environments on the site are really an important part of both the site ecology, the hydrologic quality of the site, and also the site character. So, we have taken, and the team has taken extensive care to avoid impacts to wetlands, waterways, improve existing site conditions, and for instance, in this case, the Maha Farm Lagoon is significantly expanding the stream and riparian corridors that are, and ditches, I guess, that are, kind of exist in that area, restoring them into a more natural and healthy context. The benefits to water quality and aquatic resources in this area and throughout the site are significant. So at this point, I would like to introduce Cody Anderson, who will discuss the sustainable infrastructure and site development for the site. Cody is a principal at Sherwood Design Engineers, a site civil engineering firm in San Francisco, a North Bay native, and he's got extensive experience in the region and in terms of engineering sites with the lightest touch possible. Sherwood, I think was mentioned, as Jonathan mentioned earlier, is the civil engineer for all the site elements, including roads, commercial sites, and utility systems. So, Cody, over to you.
Maybe.
Jake, Cody iPhone is up next to speak, please.
Okay, yeah. I'm trying. I don't see Cody iPhone.
His phone number is seven 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 nine nine.
The last four digits of that again, I'm sorry?
Eight two one eight.
Okay.
Find it?
All right. Can you give me a sound check there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Apologies, I'm quite remote today. Couldn't get the video to work, but thanks for the introduction, Joe, and thanks to the board and everyone for today. I will give a brief description of site infrastructure, and I'm going to start with the phase one roads. Unfortunately, I can't see the slides, so let me know if you need me to pause for a moment. So, the existing ranch has a very extensive road network, approximately seventy-two miles of existing, well-developed and very well-maintained agricultural roads. And as you can see in the exhibit, the majority of the proposed roads are utilizing that existing network, with improvements made to them to bring them up to current compliance with county-state CAL FIRE codes. All the roads, road, all the proposed roads comply with the minimum slope requirements of sixteen percent as a maximum slope, and most roads well below that, and will have two-way access roads that are a minimum of twenty feet wide plus shoulders. The green roads on this exhibit are existing roads that will be improved within the first phase. Yellow roads are existing roads to be relocated, meaning that they're being adjusted to avoid sensitive cultural or biological zones. And lastly, the orange roads are the new roads needed to complete the road network. All the roadways will be improved or constructed to accommodate two-way traffic lanes with fifty feet of defensible space on either side, and in an effort to have light touch on the land, we've done extensive modeling of the road in collaboration with site design and landscape teams. Speed limits and traffic calming techniques will be implemented across the site to ensure safe and shared access on all the private roads within the Guanac Valley District. Next slide is typical existing conditions. The existing ranch roads utilize onsite native rock, which is plentiful. They're mostly gravel, and there are multiple drive-through creek crossings, meaning areas where the vehicle actually drives through the creek bed. Typical example is shown on the current slide. The next slide illustrates a proposed crossing that will eliminate direct interface between vehicles and waterways by constructing new bridges and culvert crossings in full compliance with Department of Fish and Wildlife and State Water Board requirements. All road improvements will meet current stormwater requirements and minimize disturbance to landforms, hydrology, and local ecology, and ultimately will provide an improvement to the stormwater runoff quality from the overall site. Next, I'll briefly describe sustainable infrastructure. This project requires completely new ground-up, well, below-the-ground and then ground-up utility infrastructure network to serve both the commercial and the residential developments. New electrical power distribution system will be installed underground with data networks in order to provide resilience against wind and wildfire threats, which is in exceedance of minimum code requirements. In addition, the project proposes to generate on-site renewable electrical energy with rooftop and ground-mounted solar systems for the purpose of achieving net-zero electrical energy. The potable water system will be provided by on-site wells with treatment, storage, and distribution facilities. Wastewater generated from the project will be collected, treated on-site to tertiary standards, and redistributed in a recycled water network to offset the landscape and potable water demands, non-potable water demands. Where relied upon, propane tanks will be stored underground rather than above ground, and in addition, there's an on-site composting facility to serve the native plant nursery and agricultural operations. Lastly, to discuss the project commitments, I'm going to give the microphone back to Kirsty Shobin. Thank you.
Thanks, Cody, and thanks for making the effort to make it. So lastly, I wanted to discuss the project commitments and, most importantly, the community benefits. A variety of strategies and actions will be utilized to reduce fire risks throughout the property. Strategies such as grazing, vegetation removal, and irrigated fire breaks will be used throughout the site's common residential and commercial landscapes to reduce fire risks. One of the primary project objectives is to become a model project of wildfire mitigation through innovative landscape management, fuel-purpose fire access roads, emergency action management, and animal husbandry practices with the intention to reduce the risk of fire. It is the project's commitment to become a fire-safe community. To achieve that goal, we have implemented multiple plans and strategies. Three of the largest project commitments that reduce fire risk include the undergrounding of both electrical and gas utilities, the requirement for both residential and commercial structures within the Guanac Valley District to utilize both exterior and interior fire suppression systems, and the maintenance of fifty feet of vegetation maintenance along every roadway to create a continuous one hundred and twenty-plus-foot fire break for safe egress for the entire property. As noted, every road is designed to be a two-way access and will have fire hydrants every one hundred and fifty feet. These commitments are above code or CAL FIRE requirements and are huge commitments for the project to offer. For instance, the exterior fire suppression system will be installed on all occupiable buildings and the surrounding defensible space. The fire sprinkler system will distribute a water-soluble fire retardant that will be sprayed on the roof of the building. In addition to these site features, there'll be additional communication systems such as a high-resolution heat-spensing early-detection fire camera located on the highest ridge and communication with CAL FIRE, a traditional emergency siren, and a non-opt-out nixle-type communication tech system. As noticed on the plan, within Phase One, we intend to build a big fire station in the very first phase. As part of the Emergency Response Center, there'll be a large helipad that can accommodate the large-water tender helicopters. In the event of a wildfire nearby, these helicopters will be able to dip into and rely on the many lakes on the property as needed. Another project objective is to provide sufficient workforce housing options and educational training programs to expand the existing high-end hospitality and construction employment opportunities of Lake County. The project proposes an educational center to provide job skills with many diverse categories. These future employment opportunities include... Another project objective is to provide sufficient workforce housing options and educational training programs to expand the existing high-end hospitality and construction employment opportunities of Lake County. The project proposes an educational center to provide job skills with many diverse categories. These future employment opportunities include agriculture, administration, construction, equestrian, golf, maintenance, resort, winery, restaurant, and spa and wellness. In addition to the farmer's market and cultivation of locally grown food, there will be retail opportunities for the local artisans and farmers. For the most part, our presentation today and the specific plan of development focused on the designs for the commercial, hotel, and resort residential uses. We thought it would be helpful for the board and the public to see an example of a residential villa. The Figueres Design Group from Argentina digitally inserted the design plans and transposed them into the existing landscape. Please enjoy this video and see what the project could look like in five years.
Thank you, members of the board, very much for your attention to this presentation. I hope that you found it informative and that it gave you a sense of what the community will be like when it's there. Before you invite comments from the audience and from members of the public, I would like to refer to the letters that were received yesterday that Scott mentioned. As you know, one was a letter from the Attorney General's office, and Anita Grant and I had a very productive conversation yesterday afternoon with their office, but we feel that it would be premature to try to address their letter today. We'd like to have an opportunity to speak with them again and to ensure that all of the points in their letter are addressed in a thorough and a measured manner. We feel that's very important. So for that reason, we would ask that after today's public hearing, that you continue this matter, and when you reopen the public hearing at your next hearing, that you allow us to address the letters and any other public comments in a coordinated response at that time. So although that means that you'll have to see us all one more time, we feel that it's best for the county and for the project to have that additional time. So thank you very much once again. We are available to answer questions that you might have for us before you turn it over to the public.
Thank you very much, Catherine, thank you. Excellent, well, we'll bring it back to the board then, obviously. I do have a question for Anita, and if you can help me through the process here with the request that was just made, obviously, for the continuance, is there a motion or an action that we need to take addressed by the board? Anita?
Hello?
Hello, Anita, there you go.
Yeah, sorry about that, it took me a while to, there are so many participants, it took me a while to find my name. In terms of how you proceed, again, it's truly up to the board. You can take public comment partially today and then take more at the time you continue it. You can take public comment as to particular areas and limit public comment next time to the new materials, though of course, as your board knows, that's difficult to do. It really depends upon how best you want to make use of the time. I do agree with Ms. Philippakis that the scope of the letter is such that your board would be well-served by having a thorough response from them and any commentary from staff before proceeding to take action as to this project.
Okay, and I guess my clarification question, and I'm in complete agreement, and I guess I will ask for the rest of the board's comment on that also, but I think having...
I'm sorry, sir, as far as continuing it, you can simply, you can do that by motion to a date and time certain, that way we won't have to re-notice.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. So today, what I'd like to do, I really appreciated the presentations, everything that was prevented, the videos, everything, but what I would like to do is hear public comment, but move towards the point of extending the public hearing and picking another date certain by motion from the board, if that is the board's feeling with the requests. So, you know, I think we can do public comment at this point today and then address the extension of the hearing once public comment is over. If I could just ask of the board, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I think that I agree with that because I think it's important to hear the public comments because maybe that's something that might be embedded in the response that will be brought to us the following week, and I think it would save us some time if we listen to as much as possible today.
Excellent. Supervisor Scott?
I also agree with that.
Yeah, Mo? Supervisor Brown, go ahead.
I agree with that also. What I would like to do, though, I know you were talking about doing it later, but maybe if we could kind of get an indicated date now, so that way the public would know too, any public that's wanting to speak may want to wait until then to speak after they've heard all the info.
Good suggestion Supervisor Brown. What, yeah, I guess the question would be, how much time do we think we need, Scott? Community development or Anita, do you guys have any idea of on a date? Are we talking next week or are we talking a little bit longer time for response?
Supervisor Simon, I've heard 14th and the 21st. I'm going to actually defer to the, I'm going to defer to the consultant and the developer. The lion's share of those responses are going to be in their hands, so I will, I'll defer. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead Catherine.
All right, why don't we hear from AES first because they have quite a lot on their shoulders.
Okay, Ryan.
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I believe we would be ready to discuss the responses by the 14th, but we may not have all the documentation available for posting 72 hours prior to the hearing. So with consideration of that time constraint, I believe the 21st would be better.
Okay.
And that's acceptable to us. I mean, I think we had originally planned to ask if you would continue it to the 14th with an understanding that you might have to continue it one more time, but I think if Ryan feels that she needs until the 21st, that's also acceptable to us. We're, you know, want to accommodate the needs of everyone here, and we also don't want to waste your time and your schedule.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could we have the Assistant Clerk of the Board take a look at our calendar for the 21st and suggest a time when we could schedule this?
Yes.
Johanna, can you pull up the calendar for the 21st?
Yeah, on the 21st, I have two public hearings already scheduled, one for 9:30 and one for 10:00. And the one at 10:00 is for the transit hub, so I don't, I'm not sure how long that will last.
I think that one will be relatively brief, so we could set this matter for 10:30, I think, on the 21st. Will that work?
Did I understand correctly that the offer was to put it on the 14th, and in case that not everything was accomplished for the 14th, that then it would be moved to the 21st? Did I, was that what I understood?
No, I, I think that was, what was talked about was the 21st. They thought maybe, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ryan, you can go ahead and say it over again, but it seemed like the 21st would have an opportunity where we could get all the information in and plenty of time and be able to have a good productive meeting on the 21st. So I think that was, you know, what was said, but Ryan, you can say it again if you want to.
Yes, I agree with that. I think the 21st is a better date, and that's mostly because there will be some revised documentation most likely, and we want to make that available on the county's website 72 hours prior to the hearing, so I think the 21st will be better to accommodate that timeline.
All right, so what we would do then, obviously, is we'd be looking for a motion to continue this hearing until the 21st of July at 10:30, was that the time?
Can we do the motion now or do we want to do public and then do the motion? I don't know if it makes a difference.
Either way.
Okay, well, then if it's either way, we'll go ahead and if we could do the motion now, I think, let's just get it taken care of and then we'll go to public comment.
I move to continue this public hearing to July 21st at 10:30 a.m. after hearing public comment today.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to continue the hearing until July 21st at 10:30 a.m. Johanna, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Now what we're going to do is we are going to, if there are no questions from the board at this point, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Okay, it's seen none, so we're going to, Jake, we're going to go ahead and go to the hands that are raised, and I do see a few, so we'll work through that process here, and I know now, this is the first time we're doing this, this is a hybrid meeting, I do know that we have folks both in the audience and we also have people online, so what I would like to do is go through the folks that we have online, and then Supervisor Sabatier, because I can't see the full room, if we could, once we move into there, if you could just ask the folks to come up once we get to that point.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair, shall I keep the two-minute timer for you today?
You know, I know this is a pretty big subject here, and I know we're going to have multiple times, yeah, let's try and keep it at the two minutes at this point, and then I think moving forward, when we get the final stuff, we will go back to the three minutes when we have our hearing on the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jake, go ahead, and let's go through the hands that are raised in the room here, in the Zoom room, and then once we're done with those, we'll go to the actual boardroom.
Okay, so the first hand that we have raised here is from Dan Gleason Camp. Should be unmuted, will you give me a sound check by confirming?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah, well, thank you very much for taking my testimony. I'm Dan Gleason Camp, I'm the Executive Director of the California Native Plant Society. We advocate for native plants and the habitats in which they live, and we also advocate on wildfire and climate change issues that put humans and native plants in danger. And I got to say, all of these are problems with this project, as our allies have pointed out in writing, and as I think you're fairly aware. And thus, we are asking that you not approve the project when you meet in a couple of weeks. The project has some really big problems with regard to native plants. The surveys are likely inadequate, just, you know, for example, they found 26 sensitive species, rare plant species, on the site, and the likelihood of 81 other species. These need to be found, you need more survey work to see if they're there or not. Moreover, the data in the public databases suggests that there could be as many as 180 potential sensitive plant species on site. We got to ask, how did they miss over half the species, even as just a potential? Worse, we see no vegetation survey for the site, which actually kind of suggests that there's something to hide. Are there significant rare wetlands, underreported riparian areas, unique and special Lake County plant communities? We can't tell from the data. The EIR is designed to give the supervisors clear guidance on what will be harmed by this project, so you can make a sound decision. Massively incomplete information is a problem for you guys. I also have to say that, you know, water is a major issue. To me, it looks like a water grab, there's that big well in town in addition to all the plentiful water on site. And regardless, the region will suffer as more water is drawn out of the water table, farms, creeks, and the groundwater that supports the trees and the wildlife will dry out over the long term. As for wildfire issues, I got to say, just our San Diego County chapter has participated in at least four separate sprawl developments that are very much like this one, but one difference is that those projects all tried to create wildfire evacuation plans, unlike the project proponents here, and those plans were about 30 pages long. Recently, just a couple of weeks ago, San Diego Board of Supervisors turned down one project, four to one. Voters turned down another one, 60%, and the last two lost in court. Fire is important, and we need to have decent evacuation plans or else everyone's in jeopardy and we, and we, another major disaster, as you know. And then finally, finally, as for climate change, the state of California has to go carbon neutral by 2045, it's the law. Everyone has to do their part on this, including cutting down vehicle miles traveled and certainly not building large reserve communities out in very hot places where they're going to be running the AC all the time. We simply ask that this project do its fair share, like everyone else in California, nothing more, but certainly nothing less. So thanks again for taking my testimony, and we're available for, to provide additional information, try and improve the project, certainly ask that you delay on considering it and think about how to make it less impactful to the really beautiful environment that we all love in Lake County.
Thank you very much for your testimony, thank you. Okay, Jake?
All right. The next hand we have up is Wade Skiles.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Wade Skiles.
Thank you.
Great, thank you guys for the opportunity to jump in here. I've lived in Middletown since 2002, I love this place, and my heart is here, I think it's an absolutely amazing community. As an architect, I have always wondered when and not if we would see development pressure on our town and in our valley. I'm amazed it's taken this long. pressure on our town and in our valley. I'm amazed it's taken this long, actually. I've thought a lot about what that would mean to life here, for better and for worse. I've stood up against Dollar General as selling ourselves short for a bad business model and a bad county model. At the Middletown Area Town Hall, I've recommended an oak tree ordinance to protect against vineyard development pressures around my house as an example. However, with the Maha project, and after giving it a lot of thought, I can't think of a better, more ideal, low-density, seemingly eco-thoughtful development, and one that should tip the scale toward a vibrant, self-sustaining economy in Middletown and South Lake County. Of course, I do worry about water use and would like to understand more about that aspect of the project. Regarding the employee village proposed at Santa Clara, I have done some preliminary research into what this development might mean for the site and our town. I've discussed my ideas and concerns with the partners at Maha, and they have been receptive. I think if done right, if done well, this could be a very positive neighborhood addition to Middletown. While considering density, the neighbors, and Dry Creek, in my opinion, the project can and should reflect a cohesive village-style architecture to promote community and connectedness. With more rural flavor, with open space, more covered outdoor space, connected to the landscape, pathways and open space, post-walking and biking to town, where possible, reducing pavement, reducing heat gain, water retention, drought tolerance, gardens and play space, fire mitigation, obviously, would be important.
Two minutes.
It would be very truly great to see businesses stay open in Middletown and even thrive, since the fire, we've had a rough go of it. Many businesses, including our Boars Breath Restaurant, have been vacant for years, and I'm not personally okay with this stagnant aspect of our town, and I will prefer a more sustainable and vibrant community. Lastly, Santa Clara will surely be developed by someone at some point. I can't think of a better scenario than with a developer whose image is paramount to its mission. After a lot of thought, I think this project is a great opportunity for Middletown and for Lake County. I want to thank you guys.
Thank you for wrapping it up, Wade. Appreciate your comments. We're doing everything we can to kind of keep it to two minutes, and I know you guys are doing pretty good. Let's just, we'll continue along those lines. So go ahead, Jake, let's go to the next one.
All right, the next one here, they raised their hand to speak earlier. I just want to check on 8218 here, just to make sure that you don't want to make a public comment. Okay, we'll just move on from that, because I don't think that, I don't think they want to speak.
Okay, Jake.
Okay, so the next person I have in line here is Chris Carlisle, maybe? Carlisle?
Yes, that's correct, Carlisle.
Okay, great, thank you. We can hear you.
Great. I wanted to speak today in support of the project. My wife and I have been members of the Middletown community for 26 years, raised our children here, and been very involved and working in the community. We obviously have a very deep rooted interest in this community and the continued positive development and maintaining our Middletown culture. A few years back, I spoke in opposition to a similar large project at the same location. It was because it was not well thought out and did not at all resemble the thoughtfulness of this project. We support this project because it's very responsible environmentally, and that is what we've always wanted to see for our community. We have property that borders this project, and we'd be directly impacted by it. We moved out there for solitude, but we understand that it's about more than just ourselves, the entire community, and we have to look at the project as a whole. I feel that this project takes in the community's best interests, and this is a project that should be seriously considered for approval. I think this is going to bring economic and educational services that our community greatly needs. I've had the opportunity to reread through previous mitigated EIRs, the EIR from 1976, and some of the current, also the current property proposals. Everybody is going to be impacted in some ways. Some are positive, some are negative, but there's no way to please everybody on this project. But we sincerely believe this is going to be the best thing for this Middletown community, and we hope that it is successful and moving forward, and want to thank you for the time to speak today.
Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, Jake.
Okay, the next hand we have up here is Annie Menuzzo? I'm going to try unmuting you here, Annie. All right, looks like you're unmuted. Could you give me a sound check and confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Annie Menuzzo.
Great, thank you. We can hear you.
Good. My husband, Robert, and I have lived in Cobb Mountain for 20 years, and I truly believe that the aesthetics revealed in these presentations and the safeguards represented in the reports both seem to protect and enhance the natural beauty of our county. I have served as a small business advisor in Northern California for 15 years. From that perspective, it is clear that the positive impact of the tax dollars generated and jobs provided by the Maha Resort will provide a perfect lift for our county's economy. I would proudly support the development of the Gwinoc Valley Project. I do think it's important for them to answer as many of the complaints and questions that have been raised in the community, but overall, I think this is an extremely positive move for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, Jake, go to the next one.
Okay, the next hand we have up here is Monica Rosenthal. Monica, it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, good morning. Actually, this is Terry Hoberg via Monica Rosenthal Zoom. She's kind enough to help me out with this process, because I will say it's been difficult. So I'm Terry Hoberg, and I live in Middletown, and I understand that development will happen in our community, but I do have great concerns regarding the Santa Clara Avenue project. Yes, it is in my backyard. These plans were approved back in 2006, over a decade ago, prior to the recession. That doesn't mean that it's a good project now in 2020. It seems it was thrown out to planning to see how much could be approved, asking for a rezone to have more density, fortified bedroom homes, some with granting units. These are not typical Middletown homes, and it doesn't seem to fit in our rural neighborhood, and it's not really in central Middletown. We've chosen to live in this small, small community, as I said, and this would change that and our quality of life for our town. How will it expect the wildlife? We enjoy seeing the hawks, the owls, and the bluebirds and other animals in the open space. What will the design plan be like? Is it going to be two-story cooker, cookie cutter housing? Certainly, that wouldn't fit in this rural area, small town either. This is a dense housing project that could add four cars, boats, other vehicles per residence. So is there going to be adequate and safe parking for each home? Is there a garage, driveway space, and wide enough streets for parking? Will it overflow into other neighborhoods? What about safety issues for pedestrians? Will the housing be rentals or for purchase? Will it be for Gwinoc staff only or general public too? Will it be fire-safe, energy-efficient? Will it have adequate open space and friendly street lighting for those who like to start?
Two minutes.
In the country, who will maintain the subdivision in the community house? I got to speed this up then. This is a flood plain. If dirt is imported, imported, which we hope it won't be, and certainly not from the Gwinoc project, since it's mostly cementing and not good for any construction, is there a plan for their own water retention? Again, we have great concerns for flooding on our properties that would block the flow of drainage from our properties, and what would be done to prevent this from happening to us? Could the project be moved to the 37-acre site to Gwinoc? The well site is to be drilled. It is also a community concern. Would water be directed to Gwinoc only? What of our existing water and well sites? Please don't forget the Superfund site just down the road that's affected other property wells in the past. There are debris piles on the Santa Clara Avenue property with, will an analysis of the content be done to determine if hazardous? Should there be a separate EIR for this? What about road improvements? They're not currently county-maintained. Would access via Office Santa Clara, a secondary access if Park Avenue? Could one side be sidewalk for pedestrians' safety and one side remain in a natural state so not to overdevelop the neighborhood? Again, a new community, should a new community be based on old plans, and a lot has happened to our county in the past years? I feel it's important to get it right the first time. We should be receiving the same considerations that have gone into the Gwinoc development plan. They're in for not intruding into nature, don't.
Low density.
Low density, and, right, our concerns of low impact environmentally. Friendly development doesn't seem.
If you can kind of wrap it up here.
Oh, I am. I just said a couple sentences. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to, the density doesn't seem to have been addressed completely for me. What about, they were saying, what about paying reverence Santa Clara Avenue? It's a beautiful property, too. The investment is so great at Gwinoc. They have a 12-acre garden. They're talking about developing 12 acres into housing. Preservation of natural landscape, a light touch on the land, plant additional trees, preserve wild habitat. These are all really, really big concerns. So thank you for listening.
Absolutely, Terry. And like we said, we are continuing this on, so there'll be some more information, and thank you for your comments today.
Okay, then, the next hand we have up is Victoria Brandon. Trying to unmute you here. All right, looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
I'm Victoria Brandon. I'm here representing the Sierra Club League group.
Great, we can hear you.
So I'm delighted to see that the Native Plant Society has gotten into this conversation and hope that the issues that will be addressed by the consultants in the next couple of weeks will include their concerns. I certainly bow to their expertise on these issues. I've got other concerns I want to express today. First, we submitted a letter yesterday raising issues about CEQA compliance in the general plan revision, and I would like to confirm that that letter was received.
It's in our attachments, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, good. I felt fairly sure of that, but wanted to make sure. So that is, it is an issue to, that the project is supposed to start, the environmental review process is supposed to start, by listing all the entitlements that are being requested and then address them in the environmental review. And this kind of, this change in the general plan was not incorporated at that time, and I think it's imperative to maintain the integrity of the planning process, that it be addressed in the environmental review, which is going on now. And since this is being postponed for another two weeks, there is going to be time to do that, and I certainly hope that that is one of the undertakings that the Community Development Department and the consultants are going to address. I also was very interested to hear Scott DeLeon's comments at the beginning of this meeting about the primacy of the area plan over the general plan in this connection. I think there'll be people who want to bring that up again in connection with other projects if that, they come before you, because we've heard the opposite contention on quite a few occasions. But I'd also like, was interested in his remark about the 400 residential units which are being proposed at this time.
Two minutes.
But the total entitlements requested for the residential development in the rezone is not 400 units, which is consistent with the area plan. It's 1,400 units, not counting any workforce housing that might be built on the site. And this inconsistency with the area plan, if the area plan is to be considered primary, is something else that has to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, Jake.
The next hand we have up is Ross Mittlemus. All right, he should be unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Morning, Supervisors. My name is Ross Mittlemus with the Center for Biological Diversity, nonprofit conservation organization. The center submitted extensive comments on the draft EIR of this project in April, and we've continued to be surprised and dismayed at the haste with which the county has moved forward in an attempt to approve this project. We repeatedly asked the county to give members of the public the time they needed to review the changes and new information EIR and associated planning documents that were made, not made available for review with the draft EIR. While the decision to continue today's hearing will, will address these concerns in part, it demonstrates the project's rushed and incomplete analytical approach thus far. This process has repeatedly forced the public to make what the county referenced as 11th-hour interventions. Yet, the county and applicant have made hasty amendments attempting to address these problems without adequate review. The center remains deeply concerned about the significant environmental impacts from this project, including impacts to biological resources, water quality, greenhouse gas emissions, water supply, wildfire, and public safety. The project will have a devastating effect on the habitat and wildlife of the project site, including oak woodlands, riparian habitat, and critical migration corridors. The project will also significantly increase car traffic and vehicle miles traveled in the county at a time when California needs to drastically reduce car travel in order to meet its statewide goals for greenhouse gas emission reduction. Finally, the project's low-density sprawl in remote wildfire-prone location poses a serious threat to the safety and well-being of people on the project site and residents in the region of the project. Dr. Thomas Kova, a preeminent expert on wildfire safety and evacuation in California, reviewed the EIR and expressed his strong concerns about the process, stating, quote, "The county did not perform a project-specific wildfire evacuation analysis. Even in the absence of such analysis, there is strong evidence that evacuation times could exceed lead times for the project, which could pose a serious threat to public safety," end quote. Lake County is still recovering from recent destructive wildfires that impacted residents, property.
Two minutes.
Firemen. The county should not subject its communities to higher risks of more catastrophic wildfires in order to build high-end luxury resorts and residential accommodations that serve high net worth individuals, which are the target clientele of the applicant. Given the unaddressed environmental concerns noted above and in our FEIR comments submitted yesterday, we urge the board, in the name of public safety and environmental stewardship, to deny all project approvals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ross. Okay, Jake, let's go to the next comment.
All right, the next hand we have raised is from Maria Ruttenberg. All right, Maria, it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm with your first and last name?
My name is Maria Ruttenberg, and I'm a trustee of Dave Foundation that owns Middletown Mansion, who is a direct neighbor of the proposed development.
Okay, go ahead, Maria.
Yes, so I wanted to discuss this project a little. We bought this property, I would say, a few years ago, way before we knew about the project. We bought it because we wanted a peaceful place for our nonprofit retreats. We do teen projects, we do nonprofit retreats, we host weddings, we do civil work. We like the setting, we like the community, and we feel part of it. We took a long time to review the project. We were in contact with the developers, and I was very impressed to see how well they thought out the processes. I wanted to comment about two things. As an owner of the mansion, a lot of people come and stay in Middletown, and a lot of them unfortunately leave for entertainment to Calistoga. So we get people who are willing to spend money, who end up going to Calistoga and spending their money, because frankly, there's not much to do in Middletown. And this needs to be changed in a sustainable, friendly way, and I think this development is an excellent example of how it can be done with satisfying the fire concerns, environmental concerns, and reasonable, sustainable development for the area that's going to help pretty much everyone who lives here. I wanted to comment on two things. First of all, the fire access and the fire safety. The default right now is huge space of land which is completely open to fire. The way the developers are proposing to do it is going to be much safer and much better, and I'm all for it. And I'm actually a direct neighbor of the project. So if anybody should be concerned, it should be me. I'm welcoming the project. And the second thing I wanted to talk about the environmental. There is an optional off-site well, which happens to be directly on my site, and I did look at the environmental provisions proposed, and I'm completely happy and safe with what they're asking. So the water access is not a problem, and to me, it looks absolutely safe and good. I hope you guys. I hope you guys support the project. It's been in the works for many, many years. Many concerns raised so far has been addressed already, and I'm sure going to be addressed again. And overall, I've seen a lot of projects like this. I would say this is the most sustainable and beneficial to us as can possibly come. So I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, Jake, let's move to Joe's phone.
All right, that's, yeah, the next hand that we have up is Joe's phone. All right, it looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm with your first and last name?
Yeah, Joe Sullivan.
All right, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I support this project. I currently live on, or moving to Grange Road, which is in the area of the project. And I think that a lot of comments have been made about the economic benefits to the project, which I believe will be of our community. But I think there's also other benefits to our environment as far as our family lives and our, and the way the Middletown is now compared to where it was before and where it needs to go. Currently, I've been involved with community projects for the past 19 years. I was involved in math for several years. I was on the Planning Commission for a few years for District One. And I've seen, you know, you go to a meeting and it's the same people running all the meetings all the time, Middletown Days, our rodeos, math meetings. So, and over time, people have moved away and people have quit because they've gotten frustrated because there's not enough help for things. And so we've lost, or we're seeing the losing, losing rather, of our traditions in town. And I think that when people talk about the survival of Middletown and how this could change it with people coming from out of town, I think they're missing the point that those are people that have kids and lives too. And those people will probably be interested in the community. And, you know, they could volunteer to help coach. One coach can take 10 or 15 kids. If you get 10 people, new people that have the, some excitement to do something like that, potentially, that's 100 kids that could do something or learn something that we don't even offer right now. And they were talking about the commute time or the automobile traffic. Well, as a local, a lot of people would be able to shorten their commutes. Several people.
Two minutes.
For hours a day. And so they can't volunteer for things. They can't participate in community functions because they get home late from work. So I think that's, these are really important things that get overlooked when we're talking about stuff like this. You know, bringing new people onto the town would support our businesses, you know, local businesses. Even if the residents that pay for the hotels and stuff are staying there on the, on site, we have the workforce, you know, trades. All that stuff will be, not just during construction, but they'll have to maintain it going forward. So I'm in full support of this project. And I think that we ought to be thinking about, you know, supporting Middletown through the project by inviting, having more people come in, having people to have a better job. So maybe somebody could be, you know, two-family household, maybe one of those people could work from the town, not have to commute each day. As a person that commutes each day, 45 minutes each way to work, I understand that. So I'm in full support of the project, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Great, Jake.
Oh, okay, so the. Sorry, the next hand we had, I believe it was Jane Jorkovich. Yes, it looks like you're unmuted. Confirm your first and last name for them?
Yes, my name is Jane Jorkovich.
Okay, great.
Uh, yes, can I start now?
Yes.
Thank you. I've been coming to the area for over 20 years to Harbin, and I recently became a homeowner in Anderson Springs. From, judging from my conversations with the neighbors, this project is greatly anticipated by the community. And I wanted to comment in support of this project. I believe it will bring economic vitality to the area of Middletown, which seems kind of in decline and stagnation. With so many businesses looking very decorated. What a beautiful vision for this land. I'm so impressed and I'm glad I watched the whole presentation. And I'm very impressed. And again, I am fully in support of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Jake, I think that has, that has gone through the hands that are up at this point.
So, yes, I, I do think I lowered somebody's hand that last time on accident. So if that person is out there, will you please raise your hand again? For the time being, I do have interest from a Shannon Williams person.
Again, we will go to the boardroom for hands raised when we're done with the online hands raised.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Shannon Williams, I tried to unmute you. Will you give me a sound check?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Will you please confirm your?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Shannon Williams. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Hi. So my name is Shannon Williams. We have been, my family has been longtime South Lake County resident now for 15 years. And I just wanted to voice my support of the project as a local business owner, as a local parent, and an involved community member. I'm super excited about how thoughtful this project is, from the design to the willingness that the owners are taking to invest in locals in the community as well. Personally, I have three children, and I'm excited about the job opportunities that this is going to bring for not just the youth of our community, but also just the residents in general. People not having to drive over the mountain. The, the variety of jobs I'm excited about, from entry-level jobs to potential management of resorts and things like that. We don't have that here, not much anyway. And so I'm very, very excited about what that means for our community in general. So, and then I'm also a real estate agent, and I just see nothing but a lot of interest in our area for investors, but also there's a ton of cannabis growers, not that there's anything wrong with that in the right spot. But I'm excited that it's, it's bringing something other than that to our county. And I see it really helping hold property values and bringing interest to our area and helping our residents retain their values. So that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay, Jake, let's go to our next hand up, and we'll see. Lisa Kaplan?
Yes, all right, here she, it looks like you're unmuted, Lisa. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Lisa Kaplan.
Great, thank you, we can hear you.
Yeah, so I wanted to express my support for this project over at the Guanoc site. I think that they've done a wonderful job designing a project that takes into consideration the local environment and how to preserve it. And I do believe that they, given the time, they will be able to address the concerns that have come to light today in this meeting. I do, however, have concerns about the Middletown section. I do believe it should have its own EIR. But most importantly, I would really appreciate, and I know that Kirsty is coming to the Middletown Area Town Hall on Thursday, which is 7:00 PM, and it will be via Zoom, to, to speak and answer questions to the public. And I think that that's imperative and that the COVID crisis has really taken our attention off of some of the details that I think we do need to be paying attention to because that addition of a subdivision will have an impact in town. And, and the people of Middletown really need an opportunity to respond to that specifically, separately from, from the Maha Resort because they're very different projects. So that's my input, and thank you very much for this time. And I wanted to thank the Maha people for, for considering the public and for considering our local environment and for partnering with us.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Jake, at this point, that looks like the hands that were up, we've made it through there. Like I said, again, this is obviously a hybrid meeting. So now what I would like to do is go to, Bruno, if you can take over for the folks that are in the boardroom for the comment?
Sure. First up, we have Joan Moss, who would like to speak on this issue, on this agenda item.
Thank you very much, Joan Moss. I heard that there was going to be an off-site well. I don't know why that's necessary if there's enough water onsite. And then a couple minutes or an hour or two later, they talked about onsite wells. And they talked about fire protection. I want to know if they've already figured out an evacuation site. I know that we heard a lot about renewable energy, and now we have a superfund site nearby that proposed development. I want to know where seniors who don't have internet connection can read about this. It's 1,000 pages. It's very heavy reading. Thank you very much. I have questions as usual.
Thank you, Joan.
Next up, we have Mr. Ken Porter. Oh, no. Sorry, wrong name. Mr. Fletcher, sorry.
Fletcher Thornton, Middletown, California. I, I've been around this project since, since day one. I was fortunate to be chairman of the town hall in Middletown for a number of years. And when this first came up, I was fortunate to be chairman. And so I was in on the ground floor. And I had my personal, I'm going to talk about my personal experiences, not some in-the-air thing that could be, that would be, that may be, that all, all the other things that people bring up. I'll give you my personal experiences. When I first heard about this project, I was a little afraid of it because it was so large. It was gigantic at the time, and it's still gigantic. So I, I was a little nervous about it, and I reserved my judgment on the project. But because of my connection with Maha and those people that are the owners, I was able to go to a lot of meetings and just sat as an observer. And I was in meetings where I was, I'm not involved in it at all in any way to the extent that I work for Maha or anything like that. But I was there to listen, and they were very kind to let me sit in. So I have seen all of it from the day one, how they feel about things in the community, how they feel about the environment, how they feel about that ranch. I have an advantage over most people that talk about this project in that I have ridden every square foot of that ranch on horseback gathering cows for the top line cattle. So I know that ranch backwards and forwards. I know every, every piece of ground on it. I've been on every one of them.
Two minutes.
Thank you. And it is a beautiful piece of ground. And I have watched these guys develop a project that not only thinks about the environment, but they think about the, the people that are going to be driving by and the people that are not going to be living there. The way they've used the topography of the land, how they use the valleys and the hills is just a miracle. It's just a miracle that they have spent this much time making that project into something that we all, all of us in Lake County can be proud of. And I know in my heart that the vision that they present to us someday will be a reality. And for that, I'm grateful to the developers. And I count myself lucky to be here to watch the beginning of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Fletcher.
And I apologize, Mr. Fletcher. I believe Mr. Porter was next to you and said the wrong name. Anybody else in the chambers wish to make a comment? Okay, the rest are just here to listen in. So we're done over on this side. Chair Simon.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Superintendent. You know, ultimately, appreciate all the public comment today. What I will do, for one last thing, we'll have Jake open up the room in case anybody wants to make one final comment today, and then we'll bring it back to the board. Okay, go ahead, Jake, open up the room.
All right, I'm going to open up the room here. The room is open. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and close it up and bring it back to the board.
All right.
All right, I want to thank everybody, Community Development, all the Maha folks, AES, everyone that came in and had public comment on this issue. As you know, the board, we're going to move this item, the public hearing, to be continued to July 21st at 10:30 AM. I know there were a lot of concerns that were brought up in this meeting, but there were also a lot of support for a project like this that really could be a game changer for the entire county. So with that, there's no action to be taken today. I don't know if the board wants to have any comment at this point or would wait until we finalize this thing here on the 21st or continue on those discussions. So go ahead, and the board, do you have any comment at this point?
I do have a comment to make if I could.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Just for full transparency, I do want to let the public know that I did go on a tour of the entire facility or the entire project. I was out there with JB that we were speaking with earlier, with Kirsten earlier as well. And I believe the other gentleman's name was Andrew. They showed me around, showed me where the polo fields would be, where all the villas would be settled, where the golf course would go, just the lay of the land. I have to say, it is an absolute beauty back there. And we should be really honored to have such beauty in our area in Lake County. It's just one of those reasons we live here is exactly why that area was chosen. Because we love the scenery. They obviously found that same, that same feeling as well. The way that I look at it first off is whenever somebody's going to do a project and it's a commercial business project, most people try to use the maximum amount of that project space for their, their revenue streams, their income, to maximize that. And, and to me, the fact that they are sprawling this project out in such a small footprint, when you look at the entire 16,000 acres, says something about how they want to treat the land. Now granted, that doesn't mean that we don't have to look at every aspect of it, whether it's the water, whether it's the native species of plants. All those things do need to be scrutinized. But I, the way that I feel, the way the project has been approached is to make sure that that land remains serene because that is the reason that they want to come here. And if we change that landscape, if they change that landscape, then it would change everything for why they chose that piece of land. I'm going to paraphrase something that JB told me that his partner Adrian told him is, "You see this beautiful landscape? Whatever you do, don't mess it up." Because that's exactly what they want people to come to there. Once it's done and completed, they want people to enjoy that exact same view that they have of a barren piece of land right now that they get to enjoy. So with all the work that's been done, I appreciate them putting all their efforts into that. I appreciate all the effort of the staff, working with them to get all this EIR out to us, get all these staff reports out to us. And I, I do have not horrible concerns, but I do have some concerns. And one of them was when I was looking at, I obviously spend a lot of time looking at the water because I've gotten a lot of feedback from people that are worried about the water. I, I think that the way that I read it and the way that I'm understanding it, that the water should not be an issue. And once it comes to us as well, both Chair Simon and I are on LAFCO, those things will be heavily scrutinized as well before being approved for any kind of connection to Caliomi or anything else. We want to make sure that whoever is connected. uh we want to make sure that whoever is connected is not going to be negatively impacted by additional connections and and the likes so I I'm not worried about that but the transportation I believe it was under transportation um there was a lot of optional uh lights that were being offered to be placed on Highway twenty-nine and right now it seems that the direction that we're going is to get rid of the lights for instance in the city of Clearlake we've been having conversations with Caltrans to get rid of the lights maybe even doing overpasses uh so that you don't cross across the highway they really want to get rid of those um slowdowns on the highway and so to add all these additional lights seems to be and I know it was an option but it seems to go against what Caltrans trend is right now and to me the trend is we're gonna be putting roundabouts and maybe in certain of these intersections roundabouts is not an easy thing or maybe it's not even a feasible thing uh but that's what I would like to aim for rather than adding more streetlights I know they talked about it at Butts Canyon I know they talked about it at Tubbs Lane I know they talked about it at other areas as well and Tubbs Lane not being in the in the county but they're talking about putting it there um I just uh want to make sure that we keep moving in the direction and the trend that we're starting to follow right now uh rather than adding more places to stop as you're moving freely on the highway uh so that's that's my biggest thing um as well uh the the main impact that I see is not necessarily from the uh folks that will be guests over there I see it more as a daily uh commute for uh those coming from their workforce housing which is what's being discussed over at Santa Clara because at that point you need to go through Middletown and then you're gonna have to hit the uh intersection of Butts Canyon Road in order to go down and so any way to facilitate that process because that's what the new roundabouts at Harmon Hartman Road was all about was to help facilitate that process we knew that before that roundabout there was at least thirty to forty-five minute wait between uh uh going from Lower Lake just to get to uh Hidden Valley let alone going all the way to Middletown because there's so much commuter traffic going over the mountain into Napa County and then coming back home it would be the same exact process so I want to make sure that whatever we're doing uh we are looking uh to make sure we don't go backwards on that and that we keep looking how to better the flow of that traffic rather than um going backwards uh my my last thing was I was looking at the developer agreement um and while the developer agreement looked good to me there was one glaring omission that had me concerned uh it was kinda touched on in the um presentation today it was the community benefits and I believe it was exhibit page F if I'm correct on the development agreement I don't have it open right in front of me um if if needs be I can get the exact um letter that it is but it was uh community benefits and it was blank and in the presentation today it shared with us some of the community benefits but to me when I read them they're more the typical indirect benefits we're gonna see from any new business that comes into play if you're gonna have a restaurant well now it's a new place for people to eat there's your benefit uh it it creates more attraction for tourists who are coming through to want to stop by so to me I saw the um I I see the project and I understand what the indirect um uh benefits are but what is a benefit that we can talk about and discuss and negotiate which is typically going to be involved in a developer agreement and I don't want to uh negotiate live right here in a public meeting those should be done in closed sessions and then brought back to us to review it for approval or not approval uh but seeing that page blank uh even though it was there was slightly concerning and I'd love to be involved in making sure that there's something that we can discuss whether that's uh um anyways I I'm not gonna go into the details of what I think should be in there I think that's a um a negotiation item which is always held behind closed doors until it goes for approval so tho- those were my uh main uh concerns other than that I think I I I'm appreciative that they saw our county the way we see our county and that is exactly why they're offering to do this project right here so it's uh exciting times to be discussing this project
Mr Chair
yes go ahead Anita
thank you sir um I think that what Supervisor Sabatier is referring to is part of the Planning Commission documentation where that may have been blank if you look at exhibit O I believe in community development can correct me if I'm wrong I believe that the community benefit um section of the development agreement is is described on the last page of exhibit O
thank you for that clarification Anita
and I'm looking at it right now must have missed it
well it's a little bit confusing because the same documents are separately numbered for the Planning Commission at the Planning Commission attachment so it would have made sense to look there but it might have been because it was still in progress that might be why that was blank
okay alright uh any other comments from uh board members if not I would just like to um thank Community Development once again all of our developers that are on the line here and consultants uh this is a a large project like we said and um you know we'll have more comments uh as we go into the twenty-first on July and I want to thank uh the developers of Maha uh for as um Lisa said they will be attending our Thursday night meeting of math which is very important to be integrated with the local community and I just want to thank you all for that so there's no more comments from the board at this time on this item we're gonna go ahead and continue this public hearing to July twenty-first at ten thirty A M okay thank you very much